We're getting up.
Ready? Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August regular meeting of the Town and Poppy zoning board for deals. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Harrington Homes and Dumbel Swan Holdings. We're going to take Harrington Homes first. It's an open meeting, so everyone's welcome to stay. Let me start with introducing myself and members of the board. I'm David Tess here, I'm chairman of the board. And to your right is Kevin Sharp and Dan Nuga Bower. Our secretary Sarah Maginus. Members David Hale and our newest member Sierra Haynes. Also in the audience, Tim Barra, code officer. And our attorney Jamie Sutton. I'm going to start reading the advertisement for this first hearing. It's an application by Harrington Homes Incorporated for two area variances to allow a reduction of point six two acres from the minimum of two acres per lot as required by a single family residence or as required for a single family residence on a farm district. Resulting in a lot size of 1.38 acres for each of two lots on Water Vale Road. Tax numbers four oh one one five. Label lot two and four. Oh, one three point two labeled lot three just south of four three three four Water Vale or was labeled lot one and those lots one, two, and three are as labeled on the survey that was submitted. General procedures for the meeting are check checklist. The secretary regarding the application, I will read paraphrase the application itself. We do have some further correspondence correspondence. I want to make sure everybody knows that is here. We'll talk about the environmental assessment review. And they can action on that. And does anyone will ask any questions from the board about features and what to do? And when they're ready to go, we'll open up the public hearing. And the 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 hearing, I'll I'll repeat this again, but the hearing is a hearing for us to hear your comments and that's what we're here for tonight. We do want to hear from everyone. If we feel we've heard enough for had your say, then we we can either close the hearing or adjourn it to a future meeting. That'll be up to the board. And the the pursuit final outcome is that we would take a vote, but we don't have to do that tonight. The think the board will agree, this is a both of these are fairly complex projects. And we likely will continue them to another meeting. Any vote that we take, we're a five member board requires a majority of three members to to pass each motion. So back to the beginning on the Harrington Homes application. And has the application fee been paid?
Yes.
And is it properly advertised?
Yes.
And neighborhood notices have been sent?
Yes, they have.
Okay. The application. I was going to read the application at least paraphrasing. But we know what's owner of property Harrington Homes of Jamesville and Michael Pecanato. Is that the owner?
Let's see your vice president.
Okay.
Excuse me, could you speak up a little bit?
I can try. Oh, I'm sorry. I will try and do that.
Or yeah, with microphone or something. Maybe we can't hear a single word you're saying.
We don't have microphones, do we?
I'm sorry. The entire back row can hear.
Well, let me try and make it louder.
Thank you.
Okay. The African has filled out the five standards of proof, which are his responses to the the five items that this board has to consider. On that process of weighing the benefit of to the applicant versus the detriment to the community of this particular variance. I will read that as needed after we hear from the applicant or when we get to that point. We may not even get to that point tonight, but that's I I'll repeat it several times tonight that the the balance is whether this applicant application. We do weigh the benefit of the applicant versus the detriment of the community. That's our end end result before we vote. This application, let's see. Oh, additional information to the application. We have submitted a while ago at previous meeting from concerned homeowners on the forty two hundred block of Water Vale Road. And it's a petition from twenty neighbors, signed May twenty third, twenty twenty one. And stating several reasons why the neighbors do not wish to see a zoning variance granted for these properties. So we we have that in. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but and maybe someone wants to repeat some of that or add to it tonight, and that's fine, but we do have that on file. We did receive another letter today. And I thought I'd ask Sarah, our secretary, if she would read that. I'm sorry. We have that for the next one. I wrote it in the wrong place. Okay. And is there anything additional that you have received for this hearing? Anybody else? Okay. Any other questions from the board and procedures?
I'm good to go.
Okay. One thing we can do is talk about the environmental review, which is required that we review. We go through the process for every application. This is this particular item is a residential area variance. And is therefore a type two action. Type two actions for the environmental review process are the items of no significant impact just by their nature. So therefore, no further environmental review is required. We do have to take a vote on that. If someone would like to make a motion that this is type two action and that the DBA acts as lead agency. And since it's a type two action, no further environmental review is required. Someone would like to make that motion, so move. So we have a motion. Would someone like to second that?
I'll give you a second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. And if anyone say nay? Oh, okay. That's that, however, doesn't mean we're not concerned for the environment. It just means we don't have to fill out an environmental assessment form or go through the lengthy environmental process. We certainly do consider the environment in every action we take. Okay, I I guess then at this point, yes, we would like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Pat Reynolds with Ian Uzi and Romans Planting, representing Harrington Homes. Does anybody need a copy of the map?
We got this. Okay, so this is a it's a copy of the tax map, just for what the existing conditions are.
Now, we're also on TV. There's a way to show the audience what we're looking at. I don't know. We have a means only can put this on a clipboard.
If I could do is I could pass this around. Oh, I've only got the one copy of the tax map to send through. This is a subdivision map. So what what we have going on is these two lots are two existing tax parcels that were purchased by Harrington Homes with the intent of building houses on them. And when the time came to pull the permits, it was found out that those lots were created outside of subdivision. And they don't meet the required area in the zoning. So we're in here seeking a variance for the area. We're not creating any new lots that aren't already there. Again, these are existing tax parcels.
Can you go back just to sorry to interrupt that dates when you said five, four, and you purchased them over the dates?
So it looks like Harrington purchased them February of twenty twenty. Roughly. Going back to earliest deed that I saw that references them as three separate lots was back in nineteen eighty nine. And then it really basically stayed in the same owner. One lot changed ownership briefly, but it basically just stayed in the ownership of Meltzer. The early deeds reference subdivision map. It doesn't look like it was ever filed. I don't know if an application was ever submitted to the town. And what happened on that end, but certainly when the lots were purchased, there was no indication that they weren't created legally. So what we have is two existing tax parcels that don't happen to meet the area variance and I'm sorry, they don't meet the area requirements and we're in here seeking the variance to make them buildable lots.
And you're saying when you purchased the lots, you were not aware of the two acre requirement?
Wasn't, yeah, it wasn't something that was looked into as far as the zoning things like that.
Wasn't clear in the application that you're looking to put variance on one lot or two.
It's for both lots, both lots are at one point three eight acres. Teaching the variance for you would probably have to vote on each one except for
I think it's probably it's sufficient to
Yeah, okay.
Put it on the same applications.
Yeah.
But yes, it would be a separate.
Anything else there? Really, as far as all the other requirements, we meet the road frontage, lot depth. It really is just the area that we're not needing.
Septic design.
And they do have, I don't have any paperwork. So as far as this initial subdivision that was referenced, the lot that's directly north of this site is and it was a third lot out of that subdivision and it's the same size as these two lots that we have here. That lot does have a residence on it. Then to the south, that lot is is over two acres, but it's also just a residential home. So we feel that the residential homes that were located in here are in harmony of the neighborhood. And they're not really going to change up the feel that is currently out there.
You're saying nineteen eighty nine, all three of those lots were developed?
So in nineteen eighty nine, there is a deed conveying from Smith to Meltzer. Smith owned roughly forty acres in there. And what it was is they carved out those three lots. And they were conveyed to Meltzer. I don't know if that was when subdivision was initially tried. Or when exactly the lots were created. It's just nineteen eighty nine is the first time I could see any record of it.
Clarification question. Those lots were purchased. I'm assuming it was from the property behind.
That's what it looks like.
Which now has the name of Bootnik on it?
That's correct.
Okay.
If by any chance, do you have the date when the house, the residence was built on lot one?
That I do not.
Sometime after eighty six, most likely.
So in eighty in eighty nine, all three of those lots were conveyed to Muttslar. I didn't book.
So we're probably shortly thereafter would be the guess.
I would think so.
But there was always a deed for these two lots. The two remaining losses.
There was originally conveyed as three lots, but it says that they're being conveyed as three individual lots. So I do have copy copies of the deeds if if you'd like to French to the board or or attorney would like.
Okay, I'm not sure if we need them. We've been referring to last one, two, and three, and that's what shows up on the larger survey. So in in the that one is built upon like two and three are what you're applying for.
That's correct.
And you said the next lot for the south is built on.
It is built on, but it's almost five acres.
Okay. Oh, yeah, four point six.
Do you know if lot one had to come from the zoning board? Prove.
It's time that's okay. If it was, yeah, but I don't know. And that was, when was the two acre requirement?
Of course, I don't know. Before my times.
Yeah. That'll take some research.
You have you considered, is there any
You approached the landowner behind you.
Yeah.
You go back, yeah. If you is if you purchase more property behind those, east of those.
Actually, I believe if you purchased point six two, then you wouldn't have to be here.
Correct, right? For each lot. To my knowledge, I don't think they have been approached. If I'm not mistaken, isn't there is there a subdivision that was approved on that parcel? And this is more known.
Need a while, not that long.
I we recently got hired to do some stakeout of road on that parcel. I don't know the history of that parcel. I don't know if that's something you'd be willing to pursue.
Certainly is an option that would solve your issue. If you could add that point. Point six two acres to each one.
Or combining and doing one.
If you combine them both and made one lot, one out, that would work too.
Will you be able from the resulting variance, but that wouldn't accomplish what they're looking to do?
They look to do two houses. Right? So those are a couple actions.
Yeah.
If you know, if we don't find in favor of the variance. So and those are a couple things we will.
The question is, is there a reasonable alternative to the variance? Question is, is it reasonable? Get more property. So we'd at least have to here, I think that there was an extent to use so.
That's true. So you do.
I'm even though that's a recommendation, it's still the case that we are looking at the variance application as is tonight.
Definitely, that's any other questions from the the comments from the applicant?
Okay. Is there have been any work done on these lots?
Just the septic tests in design to make sure that we can support a proper septic system to go with it.
Okay.
But no control.
Of all salmonella.
No, nothing else has been done other than the septic designs and tests.
Okay. If nothing else, the board is ready, we can open the hearing.
Take a motion, open the hearing. Open the hearing.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Say aye. So again, the rules of this is that it's a hearing. We're here to listen. Not a debate, not a question and answer. And then and certainly not an argument. So present your comments to us. The board. That's what we're here for. If there happens to be someone representing the neighbors who wants to talk, that might save a lot of repeat discussion. I'm going to let them speak first. And if if you've got similar feelings to someone who just spoke, you want to just let us know if you agree with them. You don't have to repeat the the same things. You got something new to say, we we certainly want to hear it. So let's usually separate these. Let's start with anybody who wishes to speak in favor before we go to people speaking against. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak in favor?
Just me.
The applicant, of course, the owner. Thank you. What what's your name again? Did we get?
Harrington.
Mark Harrington. Did you get that for the record? Okay. Okay, anyone else wish to speak in favor? All right. So anyone wish to speak against? And is there somebody that kind of representing that might start? Okay. And I'll have everybody give your name and an ad address for the record, please.
I'm Eric Schwades. I have the property that's adjacent to these two properties, south of forty three ten Water Vale. I would like to register fact that I'm in opposition of the two house solution. We looked at purchasing this property for years with talking to Elliot. So we've done some extensive research on this property. It's a little bit murky as far as the subdivision, the transfer. But perhaps I could a little bit of luck. I have a map that I was given when I purchased our five acres next door. I also have some tax information here. I'd like to give it to you guys, but I could only have three or four, three copies, so you can have to share. This map was given to me when we purchased the property. It's drawn in nineteen ninety four. It's the base of the blood brick subdivision. It has the three parcels been questioned on it as well. So I am number four.
Okay.
Meltzer is here.
Yes.
So this can shed some light on your timeline. It's this map is drawn in nineteen ninety four and it's shown as a single person. Then we know at the very least.
Okay, this is the parcel where you're referring to that?
Yes, this is me. This is Meltzer.
That's what they're asking for.
All right, they want to divide this into. We took a look at the history of this thing. At some point it was subbed down. I think I believe it was in contrary contrary to the two acre minimum. I think the two acre minimum was installed prior to this. It at one point was sold from Elliot Meltzer to a gentleman named Thomas Cooney. There's a tax. There's a copy of the petition in the top. But you guys are, okay, yes, but you can see this is some paperwork from two thousand and two, I think it is. Where and both parcels, I think, went to Cooney and then went back to Meltzer in a fairly short period of time. I think that may be when it was settled. Not sure, but that's my best recollection. I think the two acre minimum was put in place in the eighties. And I'm not sure, perhaps some of the other folks here who've been living here longer than I been helping with that because they've been, and there's a lot of us. I raised some concerns with the septic. You put two septic, two well next to us. I looked at the whole drawing that I had, their septic is going to go right next straight at the end of our drive, our turnaround, which doesn't make me happy. And it makes me wonder, they broached the subject in the twenty nine acres behind us. I know in one of the previous meetings, the lawyer had brought up the subject of one acre versus two acres. In my mind, I'm going, does that mean twenty nine one acre houses behind us with twenty nine septics and twenty nine wells? I don't want that either. I don't think it can support it. I need to talk as well about the fact that it was existing as a two parcel as two parcels when the sale was made. I was very interested in purchasing this property. When it first came up, I believe Cheryl Schatz was handling it for the estate of Elliot. He'd passed away. And it came out that they were selling these two lots at forty four thousand. And it came out that they were selling these two lots at forty-four thousand dollars apiece. I immediately went and met the sheriff, they gave her that map. I also told her, you know, there's a two acre minimum to build. In Pompey, because we are zoned agricultural. And she wasn't aware of that. She then um adjusted the sale price, all that kind of stuff, I got into a little bidding war. Fortunately lost it. But uh. It was made perfectly clear to Cheryl, and I was told that it was conveyed to the others interested that this. Lots need to be sold together because they need to be combined. If you're gonna build. Now, two small houses next to us will, for the reasons of the petition, um. Effect adversely the neighborhood, we all feel. Um. One house. I think would be more commensurate with what's around. Um, I think. That is about what I have to say. There may be other information you can glean from some of these people who've been living here longer than that, but I rise in. Uh, uh. Totally against two house, a two house. Solution for this, right?
Um, thank you, uh, one thing I can add to the. One acre, two acre lot, I was around when that happened, I can't give you dates. Um, but one of the reasons for going with a two acre lot was after studying our. Uh. Generally for. Soils for percolation and uh. And and some um. Some bedrock areas, but mostly poor soils, it was felt that we needed the two acres. For this, the space. The house, the well, the septic system, and a re- future replacement septic system if needed. And that that we needed, or a replacement well, or a second well. Uh, that we needed the two acres, that's one of the reasons that was put into place, in fact, the committee started out that. They thought five acres was appropriate, but uh. Balance was met by the town board who put such things in place, they agreed with two acres, anyway, that's a reason for it. Not sure the date, we have to, we have to. Go back to the records and find out when that happened, but thank you. Um, anybody else? Something new?
Nothing really new, we have uh, I'm one towns, I live pretty much across the street from the property, um. And it was originally advertised, it was shown as one lot. Um, the developer, Mark Harrington, built this beautiful home, he does a real good job. But. He bought that property with the thought that it was two acres and he was gonna build two homes, so he knew. There was a fight ahead of him to do that. Um, I think the law. For two acres was made on good premise. I think. I think as a community in Pompey, when we have a law like that, when we start diverting from it. I think it causes an awful lot of problems down the road. And one thing about the environment that wasn't mentioned. Uh, right behind these two lots is it isn't much of a stream, but it uh empties into limestone creek. So if the septic isn't put in the right place, or something happens while they're building. That would affect the trout stream. And Russ Haynes can attest to that, he lives right down where the two go together on the bottom of the road. Um. And that's, that's my main thing, I think that's a good law that was made, and I think it should be observed. Um, I think it shouldn't be given just away. For the profit of Mr. Harrington, I don't think that should be done.
Right, that was I that.
I have one other thing I'd like to say, um, I was approached, well, I was out doing some gardening. And a lovely couple from Tully. Stopped. Came down the the drive to talk to me. And they asked me about the property next door. And I said, well. Here's the story, I referred them to Renee if they had any additional questions. But uh. There was uh confusion over as to whether it would be two lots or one lot. They told me that they loved the lot. They wanted to purchase both lots and build one house. And they were told that. They were going to be sold as two lots, not one. I mentioned that anecdotally in that there are people out there. Would buy the three acres and put one house in. So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Something new?
My name's Jeff Hughes. Lloyd, Julie and I have lot one, forty-three thirty-four, so we're adjacent to the north. Uh, I agree with what Eric and Wayne had to say. I just wanted to add one other thing of. Traffic on the road, as everybody knows, is a high traffic road. Uh, recently in the neighborhood, actually. Together, we contacted the sheriff's department over concern over. A lot of speeders lately. Uh. I looked before we came from the crest of the hill moving south.
There's not a good line of sight.
To the, just from the crest of the hill, if you count both sides, there's already currently six driveways. Between the crest of the hill and the end of the slot. Uh, putting in two more driveways, I think, just a concern with traffic. Um, that's how, that's all I wanted to add on top of what the summary events said. Good.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Alright. Um. That's all good. Very helpful to us, I think. And uh. You, what do we think, do we need to, should we close the hearing or continue it open, or are you ready to vote on this, or what do you, what do you think? Um. We have to close the hearing if we're gonna vote. Um. I, there, there are some unanswered questions, like. When did the two acre? Requirement come into play and compare it to some of these uh, this. This new survey. Like, oh.
If I'm just on that one issue, the two acres, um, if that was put into place in nineteen eighty, or for nineteen ninety-five. Not sure what difference that would make. But that, that is where we are now.
Good point.
Well, I mean, it may be, may be interesting and helpful to.
May I interject one other thing, in the course of our research, I did find a clause that said something to the effect that. Uh. If in fact, something was, was uh created after a year to two years, it becomes null and void. It's been a lot longer than two years, so I, any considerations about that have gone by the wayside.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree, I don't think it really matters so much as it was, we know it was in place in twenty twenty when this was purchased, I think I would come back to.
Well, uh, I think I can add, um. If the lots are created, even though they were created out of subdivision. At a time when uh that was an approved lot size, I think that is something to consider, um. These, you know, we have a recorded deed from eighty-nine uh saying that it's three separate. Tax paragons.
You have three houses, the lot you're talking about is one of those three.
No, it's a.
Please invest your comments to us.
So in the deed, it describes out the parcel, it's three hundred by six hundred feet. And says that it's three separate parcels. So. It would be. I think they were divided, even though they were done out of subdivision key. If they were. Uh, met the requirements at that time, and I do think that's something to consider. I also think it would be worth. Looking into uh. I guess check with the county tax mapping and see just how far back. Uh, their tax mapping records go. Uh, for, for them being three separate lots.
Is that something you want to do before the next? Are you requesting that you do that? For this Ford?
I could.
Do you think that would help them?
I could get that information before the next meeting, um, ultimately a church decision. If you want to. Able it or not. Or if you're turning, if you could purchase more property behind that.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that until it was mentioned tonight, I don't know if they have any interest or what their situation is.
If I could just understand your point. I think what you're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a subdivision that took place in eighty-nine. Where thereabouts. And that subdivision shows three separate lots.
I think you referred to the deed showing it.
Yeah, it, it looks like it was split by deed, there wasn't a. I don't know if there was an application to the town.
But there was.
There was.
There was an application to the town, um, it, and it appears to have been granted. Um, but it was not filed.
So the subdivision was granted but not filed.
It, it appears that way, yes, the records of the town. And I'm. Correct?
Yes.
There was, there was a subdivision, there is a map. With three. Uh, lots on it, all the same size.
It was approved by the board.
It was approved by the board.
The planning board. But never filed officially.
I believe it was. It started in eighty-six and was finalized in eighty-seven.
My question, if I may.
Yes.
You'll, you'll notice that we're part of the Broadrick subdivision. On that map, there are three lots. One of which is what is in contention, one is, is Jeff Hughes's house. Uh. And a third, I'm. Just wondering if those three lots, or those three parcels are what's shown on that map.
That would make sense.
I don't know.
Uh, that, that's what I think, and if you look at it, you'll, you'll see those are the three. And one of those three is the parcel piece, you're there trying to submit.
And this, this is current.
Not only that, then, then each one would have the two acres, which.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that's what, and that makes sense.
So this is a map of the Phil Smith subdivision. So eighty-six. Shows those three lots as a part of of a hundred and five acres. Subdivision.
And that's eighty-six?
Yes.
The wooden, this, this one that you handed us just a month ago. Ninety-four, yes.
This is something approved. At a time, too.
Ninety-four.
Yeah.
Four lots, yeah. Four lot. Total lots, last four is a hundred.
This is contradicting this.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
These two are contradicting each other.
Yes.
The taxes been getting paid on that.
I want this one show the not. This older one shows it's bad.
No, it makes a difference.
Yes, it would make a difference, but they've been targeting us for two lots. As a bond.
Before that?
Yeah.
Or you bought?
Oh, that I don't know. I mean, they must have had it cleared out before, but.
I don't appreciate property, the huge posts are showing, I didn't. Don't leave anything but.
You know what, oh, you know what, it's not filed.
Yeah, they are, I think they are selling their property on the back side.
Unfiled.
Yeah.
Signed over by the clause.
So the map we're looking at, it's uh. Phil Smith subdivision, it's four lots. The one, two, and three that were under consideration and are talking about tonight. But yeah. And, and the fourth lot is a hundred and five acres. But this was never filed, so it was.
Avoided?
Signed by the planning board chairman of town Pompey. And then.
Is it legal?
It's not filed, you have only sixty-two days to file a map, so it's not filed.
It's not legal.
I mean, the one gentleman who had got his house, he's like.
Yes. Um, well, we're gonna have to take some more time on this, and.
I don't know, the, the motion to. New meeting next month?
Uh, two things, the hearing, do we continue the hearing? Should we, no, we can or not, but we can't keep it open till next meeting. And then adjourn our decision until uh next meeting. So we can do more research on that.
You can not.
And uh. Give some thought to adding some land, that's a possibility. And uh.
Didn't I? What?
I don't know what else, uh.
Well, one great, big, huge shot.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I want to thank everybody for their comments and your consideration, I've lived in the town of Pompey on Denneberry Road since uh eighty-six. And uh, we're only a few blocks from where you are. And uh. Those that know me and what we build. We, we make sure everything is nice and it's appropriate to the area, you don't all of a sudden see something that doesn't fit, we're not interested in that. I plan on staying in Pompey until I take the bucket, so. I want it to be as nice as the reason we bought out here. So I just wanted to, when we looked at all the different pieces here. It looked like it was no problem, the first thing we did was have the hearing done, the septic, to make sure. We have a guy that read very good. And we just wanted to make sure there was no problem regardless of uh the number of lots.
How many acres do you have around your house?
I have twenty-eight.
You have a big.
I started with forty-eight.
You have a lot of land to go with it.
I do, I have one other solution. We offered it before, Jeff's on one side, I'm on this side, we said, I'll take one, he'll take one.
There's, there's another.
They take care of a lot of.
We'll see how mean the town board is when they make their uh determination.
I, I, I do want to remind the board, of course, that um. There can always be conditions, if, if it's, if the board goes in the direction of granting the variance, it can have conditions, not saying what they are, I'm not saying granted, and just a reminder.
Right.
Have one more.
Someone else wants to.
I just wanted to um say there's, I can relate, but there was, I guess, some discussion of adding property from the back, from that twenty-nine acre parcel. Um, in my mind, that might. Please the numbers, but that does not solve my concern. The frontage on Water Vale is tight. We don't need acreage behind, although he, the stream cuts behind our property, cuts further in on their property, and I'm not sure down by the Hughes's house, it winds back out again. So it's close, and it is a concern with septic, we had the same concern, and they had to figure it all out. Um, but the frontage on Water Vale is a concern, if you. Shoehorn two houses onto that property, you change the whole dynamic of the street. Now granted, it's a country street, but it's still our neighborhood. We bought in a subdivision, I bought a five acre lot in a subdivision surrounded by multiple acre properties. If I wanted to live in an acre property or less, I would have bought in Fayetteville where I can look over and see my neighbor in their house. So that's our concern, what it looks like, it's not a matter of how to, you know, get him some acreage in the back so he can meet the minimum, that's not it. The property, the way it's shaped. Is basically available for one house to make it cohesive with the rest of the property. So that we do not. Um, I mean, you have a room full of residents that are here, I don't know how many people come to your board meetings, but. You've, you're, what I think you're weighing in the balance is. The taxpayers. Views and rights to a builder.
That's essentially the.
So. Thank.
Benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community, so that's it, that's our bottom line.
But these, these two lots have two hundred foot road front.
Well, they, with, they would meet the requirement, so that's something we have to consider.
One other thing you were saying, um. The point that we made earlier was. If they could, if they were willing and could purchase the point six two acres. Then they wouldn't need a variance. All your other concerns are still valid concerns. And when it comes to, is the septic right? Is the well correct, is the water enough? Is the driveway, you know, distance and site, it, it, are all those things important, of course they are, that would just not be for this board. To determine, it would be for. Um, DOT, we look at the driveway cuts and so on and so.
If they do buy additional land. Then it would have to go to the planning board for a re-subdivision.
Yes.
And then, and the planning board would determine. Which becomes some of those concerns.
That's right.
Just same point, just words. That's, that's the only thing that we are, are ruling on is. Whether there's.
Acreage of it.
Acreage, well, if, if we're willing to grant. Acreage, well, if we're willing to grant the variance for something that doesn't fit right now. And that's one solution to it. Uh the other is just plain ban granted variance, which um I don't know that we're voting on tonight.
Unless I hear a motion. But I think we've got a little more research to do. And uh. We got, we still haven't closed the hearing, so.
It's still open.
I I just curious what. My name's Jeff Hughes. I'm just curious. If we buy the property behind that takes care of the variance, but what other research can you just repeat to me? Why you can't vote tonight?
No, it is. It is the it's the the chair doesn't. And decide whether to vote or not. If they want it, everyone wants to review more information.
Yeah.
That it's.
What information needs to be reviewed? It seems like what if it's been presented, what what further needs to be reviewed? It's hard for me to make the meetings. So that's why I'm just curious. I might not be able to make the next meeting.
Well, one of my questions is on the two acres and when was it put in place? Uh and is there a map filed that appears no map has been filed um? And it's it's almost no matter what we do. It sounds like they'd have to go back to the planning board for a subdivision. Divided into two lots from the one, because it looks like it's not filed. We have to maybe confirm that um before we take a vote on it. So. Again, do we want to close the hearing or leave it open and adjourn it out till next meeting?
If if that hang is up for sale, can the owner of that property? Can there be a bidding war on that? Is that something that, like, what would happen? Point six two acres to not be here. And you approach that landowner and said, what would you sell this to me for? And then neighbors find out about that. They say, well, we'll buy it. Like, how far does that go?
I don't know.
When you say the value of the property would it could be substantially different if there's a variance?
That happened before.
Yeah.
Water Vale across the street, they all went through that and they bought extra land to prevent the development.
Is the landowner behind those properties on this, like, did they sign?
Okay, I just subdivided at a last meeting to a developer, but that was under the guise of a woman. Building her dream farm home. And it turns out she was a real estate agent from Colorado, probably working for the developer who was trying to subdivide it and put it in a neighborhood. And they wanted to put a road with sewers in it. And the board said no, but you can put in a country road. And when they found out they weren't getting a road with sewers, the deal didn't go through because the developer didn't want it. So this is this is all swirling around our our neighborhood and our houses and it's. Somebody's got to either figure out if you want Pompey to be a country with two acre minimum or you want it, like I said, look like Fayetteville.
If I could just ask what you were just talking about, is that the new property?
Yep, and I guess she doesn't want to build her studio because that was the guise of subdividing it to begin with.
And your name, please.
Sheila Schwedys.
Okay. Thank you. It it this map shows a lot of vacant land around there, a lot of big acreage acreages, so. That that's the kind of thing the planning boards work on when when they wanted to see any kind of development. Beyond. A couple of hours. What do you say, Ford? Go ahead.
I I have all the information I need. I think they need, I think they need two acres.
I think as much as as much as the um two acre, who when that was put in place would be interesting, helpful. It doesn't, I don't see where whatever we put in, we change my thinking at this point.
I agree.
And if we deny the variance, they can go to that landowner and say, you know, do what we can. If you're gonna start bidding war, that's on you guys. You do whatever you want. Hey, Gordon, say, hey, we got two acres.
Or you could sell me one, Jeff's one, and we're all good.
Yeah.
Well, we need to uh close the hearing.
I don't know. I'm still up near with these two maps. It I mean, this. This one that was developed back in eighty seven.
Either way, was this granted or denied? What happens historically with what these?
I think we'd like to know if if this was properly subdivided.
Make sure what we're looking at is what it is.
Correct.
That's how I'm looking at it.
Uh again, do we leave the hearing open?
I will leave the hearing open.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. If anybody finds any other information for the next next month, we bring that.
You're making a motion, Kevin?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the hearing. Adjourn the hearing. I moved to adjourn the hearing until.
September.
There's gonna be a meeting in September.
So that's the hearing.
To determine some paperwork that's been filed, some of the historical.
Right now, we've got tax maps. Does show that it seems to indicate it's subdivided. This this map I'm seeing for the first time right now, so I want to make sure of it. From what we know right now, there there was an application at some point. The map was not filed. That's what we know right now. I'm not sure. We just got this.
It must have had something that made those two tax parcels that we've been paying.
But sometimes they file a deed. And the tax mapping responds to that deed, but it's not a map. Not a filed map, so it doesn't have the town's signature in the courthouse. So we just have a mo- we have an open motion on adjourning the hearing to uh September eleventh. All six seven P M of a second. Uh any further discussion on that? Okay, also favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And again, the purpose of that is to.
Make sure we got all the right.
Thanks for your consideration. Thanks for your comments, everybody. Appreciate it.
That's for the hearings.
Okay, so now you gotta make another motion.
Do we have to make a motion to adjourn our hearing?
Um no, you you did to move this, to continue that. You already did to continue it to the next meeting.
So we uh we're going to continue with the next. Application on our agenda. You're all welcome to stay or or leave.
Right, so he probably won. That's good.
We be out? Uh when we want to style, we change.
I have one.
He's got one as well. Yeah, you take that one. I did first meeting. Okay. Welcome again for continuing the meeting. Second item on our agenda, it's application by uh. Double Swan Holdings. Represented by Michael Skeel, owned by, thank you. Uh for area variances or a building height increase fourteen feet from the maximum of fifteen feet. To the existing twenty nine feet. And or building setback reduction of fourteen feet from the minimum of thirty three feet to the existing nineteen feet. For property at thirty eight fifty seven Pompey Center Road, tax map number eight oh one twenty three point one. As I said earlier, this is a kind of a complicated. Issue. And uh. We're gonna proceed similarly to the other one. I know what the procedure is, so I won't go through with that, but I will ask you if the application fee has been paid.
Yes.
And it's properly advertised.
Yes.
So you have to receive a name of notice of percent. County planning. Review was not required because this is residential area variance. That's one of the exemptions. Are agreed of the. Application. I just read the. Agenda item which describes the applications. And uh. Again, the application is mostly the description of the five. Standards of proof that we will review at some point. Uh presentation by the owner says that a building permit has applied for and been granted for a new sixty five hundred foot pole barn. With twenty by hundred and four. Thing to addition. Uh it's all press trust design, filling survey were presented to Bob Rodriguez. Uh discussed setback, side setback, uh oh road setback, side setback. Said it needed to be at least five feet. I'd rather it's had eighteen feet. So we both thought with clients, now I'm finding out that I needed to give back additional side back distance. Unfortunately, building is now up, etc. So that's the situation. And uh. Uh too much else to add from the application. We do have a letter from uh. Tim Barup that he had sent to the applicant. Of notice to of apparent violation and citing the same items, accessory building. And place too close to the sideline. Can be a maximum of fifteen feet high and appears to be twenty nine feet high. Um so there's and there's two ways to go about. Well, probably several ways to go about uh changing that or fixing it.
Old files.
We uh we do have a small survey of the property that shows everything is uh pretty well detailed done by Tom Jones um. Dated June fifth of twenty twenty three, so it's very recent survey. Um anything else received? Um yes, now we we got this letter from the. Former resident lived right next door, Joan Armstrong. I'm gonna ask Sarah to read the if into the record.
Okay. Uh dear Tom of Pompey, zoning board of appeals members. I am writing this letter because I was the person who was most impacted by the pole barn that Mike Skeel erected practically. Out my front door in violation of several zoning ordinances. For over fifty years, I enjoyed the view out my windows of the fields and trees. But after this building went up, all I could see from both stories was the pole barn. It not only took away my view, but severely limited the sunshine in my front yard where I had just spent thousands of dollars on landscaping. Not only that, but Mike Skeel brought in large trees to the side of the barn and would have someone run a chainsaw. Cut up wood for sale and leave a mess for view out my dining room and bedroom windows, not to mention the noise. The pole barn was built with the intent of renting out space to store vehicles and make money as evidenced by ads. His son ran in a local paper, which I gave to the town board. The house was made into a two family house, also against zoning laws. At no time did Mike Skeel intend to live at this property. His sole intent was to make money off of it. For three years, I lived with this eyesore every day. I lived with people commenting on it and feeling sorry for me because of it. But it was me who was heartsick about it and never felt the same way about my property as I had for the past fifteen years. It led me to put my home on the market and move away from the area because I just couldn't put up with it anymore. I feel that Mr. Skeel should not be granted a variance. He had no regard for the neighbors and the law. Why should his blatant disregard for due process be considered after the fact? I feel this is a textbook case on whether or not the town of Pompey has zoning laws. Or whether or not residents, absentee landlords can do what they want with impunity. Sincerely, Joan Armstrong.
Thank you. Uh is there anything else that's come in? Oh, okay. And just for the record, uh one reason I. Had Sarah read that. I I live in the neighborhood. I live on number two road. I drive by these properties every day. Sometimes several times and I've lived there all my life, so I know the people there and. Who their parents were and grandparents and uh. Been good friends with the Armstrongs for most of that fifty years that they've been here. Um but I have no connections with this property or project um that I. You want to know that uh I do know everybody there. And I can act on this as fair and equitably as I can. Otherwise, are there any other? Otherwise, are there any other? Are there any questions from the board at this point? If not, uh. We'll listen to the applicant if you want to add anything to your. Your emotional. That. The. Not yet. Okay. So.
Um. I tried to be a neighbor to Joan and I went over and talked to her about it. I, if I had known what the site lot was, I would have built differently. But I missed it. I missed it. You know, I tried to do everything by the book. Uh, the property is, uh, I own multiple properties all over the place. I need, I'm from Dryder. And I need a location where I can store a lot of my equipment. That building primarily houses all my equipment and I'm in the process of putting a workshop in there. I needed something a lot closer because I live in Fayetteville now. So that's what the property is used for. I've, I think I've improved it. I've improved the neighborhood area. Um, I do have, you know, in the back section, I need to, I'll put wood there because I like to saw wood and, um, then, you know, I try to keep it nice. But, you know, you're gonna have a pile of wood there and unfortunately Joan, Joan just doesn't like it. Um. I've met the new neighbors, a nice new young couple, um. You know, I, I feel bad. I, I do, but I can't do anything about it. Uh, wasn't my intent to violate any regulations. Um, I'm trying to rectify it going forward, but the building's there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Um. We, we need to take action on the, uh. Environmental assessment issue. Again, this is a, uh. Res, uh, type two action because it's a residential variance, uh, therefore no further environment required. So we need a, a motion to the effect of. ZBA acts as lead agency, uh, has determined it is a type two action. No further environmental review is required. So much. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second over here.
Okay. We have a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Uh, they say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Any other questions from the board before we open the hearing? Okay.
Oh, I want the song.
I, I, I just, I have a question.
Hey.
Do you live at the property?
I do not live there.
Who does live there?
Uh, Ron in Santa Charbox lives there.
You, you, you're renting it?
Yes.
Um. So you're, but you're using that for your personal workshop?
My personal workshop and my kids, both for, one of them likes tinker with autos and the other one likes to do woodworking. That's why.
Is, is there a second?
There's a, uh. Um. Girl who is related to the tire boxes.
Two units.
It, it's two units. Yeah, so it was two units. It's still three units.
When did it become two units?
I don't, I don't know, uh, when it became this. The only thing I've done different is, uh, added a duck on the back, which is part of the ability.
Um, when did you buy the property?
Twenty, October twenty. Behind, um, you know, paperwork I filed. Yeah, I think like three years.
Don't invite us really.
Yes, yeah, stay in.
Stayed, yeah. On the school stand.
You know, if he had more than one family living there?
Yes.
This elderly mother.
In with his elderly mother, take care of her. Yeah, I hope so.
But wait, because Dave's gonna, gonna let you have a chance to talk.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Issue.
Any other questions? We ready to open the hearing? We need to vote open hearing.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
It's, I do. I don't know if Tim makes you do it, but that's, that's my bad. Motion open. Your.
Open. Yeah. Okay. Second. Okay. Uh, you know, the discussion of, I, although it's a favor, opening hearings, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say? Thank you. Public hearing's now open. Uh, again, same rules, uh. Rest your comments to us and, uh. We're willing to hear from everybody, whatever you is. Uh, pros or cons. Uh. So. Okay. But let us know your name and, uh. Where you, you don't have to stand up either. Oh, it's fine. I need to stretch. Uh. I'm Dale Sherman. Uh, three, four, four Pompey Center Road. And. Right across the road, right across the. Yeah. Uh. I. My property is directly across from Jones and partially across from your property. Uh. And there are twenty-five years. Uh. Used to have a new stand. And. Wife, Dottie, uh. And I know they moved in to take care of his mother. Like all the time until she died. Uh, at some point, and I'm not sure when. I think it was his niece that moved in with them. She was. Didn't have a home or something like that. I'm not sure.
She lived on the one side, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. Oh, I think, I don't know if the wall went up or not. I didn't see.
Yep.
So. Um. I, 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 I have mixed feelings about the property because as much as you fix it up, it looks nice. But the building is huge and I used to be able to watch sunsets from my front porch. I can't anymore. It's gone. Uh. The building was within fifteen feet height or. And so I could still see him. It's gone. Uh, I've helped sorry for Joan because she did lose. Completely lose the view. Um. It was, um. And I was surprised because you said it's not a commercial, but you're storing prop. Equipment for commercial.
It's my equipment.
Yeah. Just you for commercial purposes. Right. So, so that seems like a, a mix. Use, um. The, there's an ad that Matt put out saying advertising storage. For feet.
A year ago.
Uh, as soon as the concrete was set up, thirty days after the concrete was set up and ad came out advertising storage. To me, that's commercial. So, um. I don't, um, I don't know if that was the intention from the very beginning when it went up. Um, and I am surprised that. Bob Rodriguez would grant a. Permit without. Uh, having, having a property, having a building that tall next to a property line. Um. Somebody who's in the business of. Real estate and multiple bus, multiple properties would think would be familiar with zoning laws. Especially if they're doing building in Tampa Pompey. Be enough to find, print it out. And see that, yeah, that doesn't work. So. I am. I don't know the solution, but it's, it's, it is a little overbearing way it is built right to the property line. Um. And it says twenty-nine feet, but it. From the outside, I think it's a little more than that if you measure on the outside. I don't know. I didn't measure it, so. Um, and I haven't seen where the survey line puts it or anything, so I haven't seen a detailed survey to know. But it does seem like it's. Very tall. I have a work, I have a personal woodworking shop across the street in a barn. That was.
You'll say I'm zen.
Say I'm zen, yeah. And, uh, barn was converted to a dance hall, you know?
My grandmother told me all about it.
Yeah, right. And you guys. I'd accorded your wife's there. I don't know.
I didn't.
Okay. Um, but it's, uh. It's, it's, it's a, I have a small hobby. Woodworking shop. That's all I do is just tinker in there. Uh, so I understand that desire to have a shop, but. I don't know how tall it is inside, but that's. Pretty big for a woodworking shop. I don't know if you need that kind of heights unless you're parking RVs in there. So, uh, that's the question. Is it? Is it, was it always intended to be a commercial? Or is it, it just seems like it's really pushing the envelope on that? So. Okay. I, I have some questions about that. Okay. Only noted. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You think, uh, I'm the current resident owner, I'm the one that bought Joan's property. I don't know. Okay. I definitely can't. You're ready to better than what, uh, Joan had written. But I can provide you some images, uh, some pictures I took today.
What's your name?
Uh, Ryan Yaworski.
Oh, you don't have to spell that for.
Yeah. Yep, uh, actually, no, Jamie, uh, she was my closing agent on the property, uh, so. But, uh, yeah, so, um. We bought the property remotely, um, based on pictures online and a video walkthrough. Um.
What year was it?
Uh, July twenty-fifth of this year.
They just.
So we literally, yes.
And so you just moved in.
We just moved in. Yeah, yeah. We, yeah, we did a move right after we closed and then, uh.
Side incident.
Uh, video walkthrough pictures. Yeah, yeah, pretty much, which obviously there's risks too.
Uh, the video, the realtor or somebody or.
Our real estate, our real estate agent, uh, did a video walkthrough over Face, FaceTime.
But they did mention the barn.
Uh, they mentioned the barn, uh, yes, they did not give us.
Were you surprised when you showed up?
I was very, yes. Uh, I'll say everything was bigger than I thought it was, including Joan's house, which I was happy about. But, uh, the, yeah, the, the pole barn itself, I, I mean, you can look at the pictures. It's, you know, you look out any window on that side of the house and it's all, pretty much all you see is pole barn. Um, if it were set back a little bit further, if it were shorter. That'd definitely be much more. What I would expect, I guess, uh, is what I would say. Uh, I, I think, you know, there's, again, there's definitely risks when you're buying a house remotely, obviously, but, uh, typically it's not. Something with like zoning violations of your neighbors where they build a structure that's twice as large and twice as close to a property as it should be. Um, it's just, it's kind of excessive. Um, I, I.
Sorry.
Share.
Yeah.
Uh, all the.
Was. Did the realtor mention anything that there's controversy with it at the time?
No. Uh, no, I, I was not aware of, of this.
Okay. I. Is it called anything?
No, no. Okay. Uh, yes, and, yeah, so thankfully, uh, Dale and Stephanie. Saw us moving in and came over and told us about this hearing today. Uh, so that's, that's why I'm.
These are your pictures, not the realtor's.
Uh, those are my pictures. If you, if you look at, uh, Zillow, you will not, you will not see the barn.
See that Zillow.
Um.
Not that this matters, but if you were, that's. You were to come out. And look at that property, would that have changed your mind?
It, it would have changed our.
I know the real estate market is what it is.
It would have changed our offer, I'll say. Uh, it would definitely have changed our offer.
Uh, I'd be contacting your realtor and saying, let's. Yeah, that's me.
Yeah.
I think if you take, she pulled the wool. That you get is Australian's.
Sorry. On the list.
Okay. Good. Yeah. Okay. Welcome to the name.
Thank you. Welcome. We are, we're excited to be here. Uh, thank you. Um. I, I guess I, I just.
Thank you.
Second, all the concerns, uh, of my neighbors who, uh, are much more familiar, familiar with, uh, you know, the situation.
And I'm Stephanie Cross. I'm married to Dale at three eight four four Pompey Center Road across the street. Um, I have been expressing concern about this building since beginning. Um, there, you should have letters on record of concern about the size that it was being posed, the location and the fact that. It seemed as though it was being built for commercial purposes. It was stated that it was not going to be, but it certainly seemed by the size of it, it was like. This is huge, it seems like would be commercial purposes. A year ago this week, there was an ad on the CAS Chitina Oak. Minnesota FM area yard sale with a picture of the. Of this barn. For rental space, so that is commercial use. So what I see is. Mr. Skeel. Um. Violated. The, the codes in the, in the building itself. And also is going against what the property is supposed to be used for. So I am definitely opposed to. Yes.
You're saying you, you filed papers. Uh, they're on file with town Pompey?
Well, I, I sent an email. I, I've talked to Renee, though I have, um, I sent a letter. And I think.
This was from the beginning when they, before they poured it, when they poured it back for your hours?
Yes.
It was brought to the town attention?
Yes. And my neighbors, our next neighbors next door, the Gorsikos, also I know had an extensive phone call with someone about their concerns before it was even built.
Did anybody get back with you? On your. Did anybody from Pompey contact?
I spoke with Renee. Yes.
Did anybody come back out to see you, to see the property after your?
I believe people did. Do.
Yeah. I can. Yeah, I, I don't want to interject with your proceedings, so you give me permission of speed.
You're, you're, you're welcome to.
Okay.
Like the air.
Um, I believe you were the one that called me. It was a phone call. Um, way back when the concrete pad was laid and I said at the time. There was worry because of the size of the concrete pad. And I said at the time, you're the best eyes on the property. Um, if something starts to develop there, what else? No. Um. I honestly, that was the extent of my knowledge of it until after it was built. And it wasn't Bob Rodriguez who issued the permit. It was Tim Gany. This, let, let's, I don't want to.
Uh, yeah. Quite a few we had here for.
Yeah, so, um. Um. But I never got anything in writing and I went back and double checked to find, because I know Joan was at a town board meeting where she says that. I wasn't at that town. I, I know I sent a letter. But it might have gone to the codes where we had so many revoc, it was almost revoc, we'd go with that this summer. I can probably sign it. Yeah. So, um, but I, I haven't got anything in writing. I just had a phone call from you and I have talked to John on number occasion, but that was interesting.
But nothing would have put enforce a stop work order?
It was already up, Dave.
So I mean, as far as once the concrete, nobody.
Oh.
But that got the check.
No permit, yes. He, he, there was no permit needed for the concrete pad. He just poured the pad and then he came in that permit, by understanding. Unless I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm not cut. I'm not. And. Although, although. Perhaps you can.
Uh, I was not aware, I need a permit for concrete floor.
I was not aware, I need a permit for concrete floor, the building was up for a year before the concrete was poured, if they needed a permit, that's later. Didn't realize is, is that true, I need a permit for a concrete floor?
No, you need a permit for that.
Yes, that was all filed before it was built.
You don't need a permit to build the poor concrete in their attempt to build the building?
Yeah, it was a year later I did.
People saw, how did you see that?
No, the pad was laid out. Well, we stayed out.
You wouldn't see an inch of the concrete, and that was a year later.
There there was building stakes marking.
Right, the certain the stakes were out where the the pad was laid, I mean, it was.
There was, there was stone, there was no.
When somebody said pad, I thought.
And just some clarification, Bob is the one I worked with and yes, there was a revolving door there. When I finally and Bob, I think left and then came back because I don't tend to stay or whatever. But Bob's the one that I talked to about all this stuff, but I do know there's a revolving door.
Who's the builder?
Or, yeah, Burkle or I think Burkle Brothers out of. Down in Southern Tier, after Amish.
Did they, did they look at the permit, did they?
They, my, I'm required to get the permit for that.
As long as he has the permit, the builder doesn't have anything else he needs to pass. I'm sorry, you corrected me on that, I I thought the concrete had been poured first, but no.
Oh, yeah, later, I want everything.
Pour it after the building was up. Now you remember seeing the, I keep referring to as a pad laid out.
Yep.
And that's when the stolen pad.
I did do a lot of excavation because of the water.
Right, yeah, I did see, yeah.
And Bob, I hadn't heard Tim. I'm I'm a little lost in the chronology here.
The only ones I've done what dealt with are Bob and Tim Bear.
Tim Bear, not.
Not the other Tim.
The other Tim.
Who issued you your permit?
I I Bob's the one I spoke to, I think Bob signed.
Paperwork on that?
Maybe the other guy signed it.
Signed the permit.
So Bob's the one I spoke to.
Right. Yeah, Tim wasn't there that long.
You applied for a permit?
Yes.
With the stated dimensions of the bill?
Along with blueprints and everything.
Tim got back to you.
Bob's the one I spoke to.
Tim wrote, Tim gave.
Tim Gany.
He he might have signed for the permit.
Six or eight weeks. Just at that time.
And and it took a while to go through all of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Tim has got something.
Yeah, I have everything on file, you are right, I went through all the emails, you did communicate with Bob the whole time. Tim must have been here. For a short period of time and Bob came right back in, you did deal with Bob the whole time. Honestly, from what I see. There was no problem between. You and Bob as far as the permitting application goes, I think. Um, communications were well through the emails, through the application, I think it was a complete error. On code enforcement's part.
The one thing I had, there was one thing I had to change, that's the only thing was on the snow load design. There's something in the emails on that, so I I had the trust is redesigned and gave that to.
Uh, Tim, can I ask you if? How? Low would the building have to be to meet setback because it's a ratio, right?
Right. So. The building to be within five feet of the property line. The building has got to be a maximum of fifteen feet high. And then for every two feet additional away from the property line, you can add a foot to the building.
So it is. How many feet away? Right now?
The survey shows nineteen nineteen feet.
So how?
It's two different lengths because of the way the property line is, the way it's two different distances.
Yeah, the closest.
But you take the five feet requirement. You you gotta go.
And so if it's nineteen feet, it could be. Which it is, which it is.
I think six twenty one. Is my push math. Twenty one, maybe twenty two.
She does fourteen. Thinking of seven more.
He only needs a variance for seven. Right, he's at nineteen. And he had five, so he wants, he wants another fourteen feet, which gives him seven feet high. That is that he's okay with, he can do fifteen, so fifteen and seven is twenty two. So he needs, he potentially mathematically needs a seven foot variance for the height.
Yeah, not for, he needs seven foot.
But can you, can you?
The building is like twenty eight. Feet tall.
Right.
He's already nineteen foot away from the property.
Does nineteen feet give him the right to have a twenty two foot high building?
Um, yes, yes.
Yeah, twenty two, twenty two feet.
By two feet, and so he's all here for seven foot.
He's at twenty nine. Has to find out seven feet.
Or down to seven feet.
Variance of seven feet, that's right.
I don't think that we worded right.
No.
To get to seven, you'd have to be another. Fourteen foot off the line. Yes.
Yes.
An additional fourteen.
Remove the building fourteen feet, then you wouldn't need a balance. If I'm just saying.
On that, on that end of it.
Yeah, you still need the variance for the depth.
For that.
The depth of a lot. There's accessory structure, there's there's no amount of size where feet. The the lot itself, I just.
Can I just clarify something, you just said, you say the depth, you're not talking from the road, I meet the road.
You meet the road.
Yes.
But the the depth of a lot. Isn't long enough, the way I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand what you're referring to.
Yeah, I I was trying to get some clarification and we may need to get some clarification.
Yeah, you have, you have the depth from the road.
To the corner of the building, in front of the building, right?
But to the back lot line.
But I don't, that's even brought up, I don't think there's any problem with that.
It's supposed to be two hundred and fifty feet. You got two hundred and thirty.
Oh, this is all news.
Uh, I I see three things when we finally got the survey, and that's one of them, the other one, the survey shows two lots. And we need some clarification on that, there's line rights going.
There is a line, but it's only one tax man. Pay taxes on both of. If we, I pay taxes on one tax.
Are they, are they two tax mats?
No.
I didn't think so, but the survey shows them both there, and I don't, I'm not sure why that is.
Yeah, this is partial D and the second. Even partial, maybe there was a potential subdivision at some point.
Going way back to we're two lots, but I bought it as I had just one set back in the place, I'd have to ask Tom why he's got that.
Well, the other thing is if you measure it to the street line. And. You only get one point seven acres for for both put together, so it's not not quite a two acre lot. Which we just went through with the, but that's. An existing forever. But. I think we need to recognize those. Two issues, that there isn't enough. Lot depth or acreage.
It's given two good, two dimensions for the road. It's fifty five on the right side and one fifty five. One forty two, right? Yeah, I mean, if it's one lot combined and you you do have the front road front.
Yes.
Can can this building be jacked up and moved?
No, it's full barns, some kind of pretty.
Do you have a pitch on the roof?
Uh, being the plans, I don't, it's really steep.
How? What's your first answer, Mike, Mike, how far apart are you?
I think they're eight foot.
Eight foot sections?
Yeah, six by sixes all in solid concrete four feet.
Okay. What do you need, the height costs money, but there is a way of you just, you'd have to show it to build it, but it's a lot.
What do you need that height for?
Um, two things, I've got a large motorhome, and I've got some family that can use.
I've been, yeah, they all require fourteen foot at work, because I mean, things, it's just under fourteen.
But above the workshops, I plan on putting the mezzanine of six foot, five and a half feet, I want to use that for storage, so I want something I have to. Possibly bending over. So that's, I've got an eighteen foot, um. I think it's eighteen foot, maybe a little less because of the concrete.
I think one of the things that's going to need to be looked at before the next meeting is the use. Um, if it's, if it's a residential property. Um, whether this can be used. For someone who doesn't live on the property for any use.
It's that same, same question for if it truly is a rental unit. Does that, does that affect what we're looking at? The fact that it's.
The, on the, on a residential property, an accessory building can only be used by the occupant of the building.
Of the property owner, not the runner.
The occupant of the building.
The occupant can be the renter.
I I'm just saying that 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 an accessory structure has to be accessory to the residential use.
And after homeownership.
If it's rented, then it would be that.
Person running. Whoever's living on the premises.
Accessory structure that.
It's, it has to be used accessory to that use that of those that are using it. Accessory structure to residential.
So that's a whole different. That's all different.
To, you're saying him bringing equipment in there and not living there. But the flag.
I mean, I have to, so I'm hearing this for the first time?
No, I'm just.
And you know, and I I want to clarify the issues.
Yeah.
That's why I'm here tonight, so we can look at them and and hopefully, uh, Tim at the next meeting will look into them. But, um, the issue of the use of that structure. Is is a question as to whether it can be used and I. It's, it had it. In my opinion, what I've read of the code and I have to go look at it again, is that the accessory structure to the residential. Structure being used as the residence. So if he was living there and he's using it.
Right.
Ex- eh eh in an accessory bay to the residential, and that's a whole question as well, um, for codes. Um, that would be one issue, the person there does not appear to be using it. From what I'm told.
But what is it, if they parked their car in it, or that it said? If they're using ten percent of the building to park their car in it. Does that mean that the person that's living there is using that building and then it's okay?
No, it has to be used. A hundred percent.
Solely by the person that's living in the rest in the rest.
Right.
Are you?
Otherwise, it's not.
How would you please?
Well, that's, that's for codes, I mean, that codes. That's what codes does, and we'd be looking at a use variant.
Yeah, that would be completely.
That's going, okay.
Eh eh as the owner of the property, I don't reside here, but I use it for my own stuff, I have a lot of equipment because I own a lot of properties. I do use it for myself, but I don't live there, none of this was mentioned when I, and I told Bob what I was applying for.
So if that's the case, then potentially there also needs to be a use variance application.
Don't know, uh, I I'm not quite, I'm not going to talk about a use variance, I will let others talk about that, that is not something that is.
I'll say that that potential actually looks at. I understand it.
It's an, it's a very complicated legal issue.
The only thing in the room is if we deny this variance. Where does this go? That's the question. We denied this variance, does that roof come down seven feet?
I don't know, I don't know that we're, I'm not so sure.
Town of Poppy, if he's been granted that permit and that's in writing documented in a file.
I will say this, and I'm, you're asking me in an open meeting these questions, and I'm going to answer them as best I can. And and I will leave this for further discussion. There, there is immunity to the town. On that issue. Of whether i- if it was improperly issued. It it's not, it's not the que- the question is. Does that prevent you from taking different action as the zoning board appeals, and the answer is. It does not prevent you from taking an adverse action, the fact that the code officer may have made a wrong decision. Is not a matter for this board necessarily, you know, you have to go through the criteria. But it's not a, oh, it's up.
Now, there's still a violation exists. We have to react to that.
I'm just talking about the legal they're asking me, so I'm answering the question. So that is not a determining, it's not the determining factor. Necessarily.
Again, thank you. Similar to the first case we talked about, I. Recommend we adjourn again.
Yes.
Give ourselves a month to.
So when you're saying the town can all say immunity to this? What's that mean in a?
Well, and and I'm just. The fact that the, that this was in a mistake.
Mistake by the codes, obviously.
Is not determinative to this board on their decision.
Okay.
Maybe that's the best way to put it.
Okay.
And Dave, you've been doing this a long time, I've gone to a lot of seminars, I think you know, you know the answer to that.
Yeah, violation is our.
Either you know, you grant the variance or you don't grant the variance, or you do something.
Work with it.
Different.
Different than.
Um, that's why the issue of.
If.
Yeah.
If the permit was granted. Why are we here?
Because the code, because.
If the permit was granted. Is in violation, which. In my mind says the town of Hoppy made a mistake.
Correct. That appears to be the case, that appears to be the case.
You know, and maybe, maybe Mike had something to do with it, maybe Tim has something, not Tim, the other Tim had something to do with it, Bob Rodriguez. And, yeah, and the all revolving doors that were going on. And somebody's going to have to stand up here and say, yeah, this is what happened, the town of Hoppy did this, and this is what happened, and whether, whether we. Whether we. Denied this application. And he sues the town of Hoppy and says, look, here's my piece of paper that says I can build this. And we built it. I'm not wrong, here's the piece of paper that's signed by the town of Hoppy.
So I'm not going to answer that in an open meeting because I think it's an attorney.
Um, Kevin, we were, same scenario happened here a few years ago, we had to come to a meeting because a permit was issued. For a garage, the Berman, Berman Road. By Fred Hill. And he never checked the site. And then he's put the pad, the stone down. And somebody called the town and he went to look, he never checked the site, and he went, oops. And he shut them down, and that guy had to come in front of us to get a variance. Because he was too close to the road.
Running road.
It wasn't running, running, same scenario.
But spread his hair when we did that.
Oh, yeah, he was at the meeting, he 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 said, oops, he was at the meeting, he says, Mike, I'm bad. Well, fortunately, that project wasn't as. Barn, barn wasn't up yet, but the pad was.
And Bob did come out and look at my site, right?
That's.
He did what he's supposed to.
But that has been a problem before, that scenario.
Yeah. So if you go, if you go thirty days, if you adjourn this hearing, you go thirty days, what information are we looking for?
I think that one thing that we want to clarify is, um, this, this variance, like how much? Is really required, um, and if it's. That's the question is, if it goes over X feet, how tall would it need to be? Because one of the things is what's an alternative to the variance?
So we, instead of what's written here in the variant, in the application, it's, it's not a variance of.
I'm not sure.
Fourteen to seven. Seven.
We, we want to make sure we understand the math, and at that point, maybe the application's got to be rewritten.
Correct, but at least he's asking for more than he needs. And we can always issue.
Tim and I talked about this, he he and I talked about this and we decided there was a side lot in a.
Yes.
They they kind of go together, this kind of goes all together, that's why it's done.
Exactly, that's what we wanted, wanted to clarify, how much, and then. You know, because an alternative could be that the, that the roof gets shortened or.
Do is take this, why I asked about the poles, I mean, I know a little bit of construction and I know he's shaking, but you could go take the panels off. Cut back eight foot. On my wing two or two poles. And then reassemble the panels, that would get you to fourteen foot away from the, the extra you need for the height. As far as shortening the roof, snow load, you you couldn't do it, if trust it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd need that, uh, pitch for your snow load. Yeah, you'd need that, uh, pitch for your snow load.
We're, we didn't, I don't think Tim physically measured to the peak. If you, do you know the specific?
I thought, we, I thought we did.
Yeah.
I thought it was a little lower and, and we corrected it. It's just under twenty-nine feet.
Okay. So we can use twenty-nine as a.
Yeah, I think he's got forty.
There's a trick of doing it. My father used to use a helium balloon in churches.
Yeah. That'll work.
I get it up top and then the the, uh, cross-site sheet and then, uh.
It's all in the blueprints.
I think blueprints show all that.
It goes twenty.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is that from the concrete pad? Up the paint? It should be from the outside.
From the ground.
Soil or the, the ground is the pad tire.
Just where the pad is.
Okay. So the rear, there was something about the rear, the rear property line? Is that the building or the leaves? The the issue, uh, no, the lean-to is clear as a proper setback from the property line. The issue with the property itself is if you're creating a new lot, it would have to be two hundred and fifty feet. That's only two hundred thirty-one feet. Well, yes, that's a existing thing. Just kind of monies waters. What do we do with that? So. Okay. I think I personally have enough questions to, uh, adjourn, adjourn the hearing. Is that, uh?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the hearing to September.
Can we do anything on a use, require a use? If you come back next. I doubt it.
Or just that's a.
I, I think there might, might. We'll have to look at that.
These variances are very difficult to.
Oh, are you serious? Was that your question or something about the use problem?
Yes.
Is the use a problem that needs a variance? That would be my question.
I do not think of. Is a valid option.
Great.
But it's something we will talk about.
Okay.
Uh, so we have a motion. Hey, somebody second the motion. We adjourn the hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that? If not, I was in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, so the hearing is adjourned to September eleventh. Meetings at seven PM. Um, we'll take them in the same order. Like, right, they're not first and then this one. Anything else? Both. Thank you for coming. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, go answer the phone.
Yes.
You know, it's. If this, you are doing that, say yes. Then they're done that. I'll hand you something. They'll say, thank you. You've been. Yeah, just say.
No, I just don't, I don't, I do it on my own. And if you are.